Okay, 5.1 budget amendments. We have Ms. Klutz at the podium. And remember, gentlemen will be, and Ms. Carpenter will be discussing these. And these will go to the action or consent agenda on our business meeting on the 11th. Okay, Ms. Klutz, you're ready.
All right. Good evening again. So we have several budget amendments for you. I'll cover the state budget amendment first. So we have, I'll hit the highlights of the budget amendments and you tell me if you have other questions. PRC 085 is the second number there. There's $162,000 we're receiving. And we see, what that is, is there's an allocation for iPads for K through 3 teachers. And so we see, we're getting those dollars in little increments. So as we do a registration process, that money comes down to us. So you may see that again, but $162,000 this time for that purpose. I'll also call your attention to the state reserve funds right after, right underneath that. So if we have a special needs child for a specific purpose, easy for me to say, we can request additional funds if they're coming to our system for the first time, and they'll grant those funds for us. And it could be equipment needs, it could be a salary and IEP, or anything related to that student's needs. But we go in and we request these dollars specifically. I'll also call your attention to the fuel, the diesel fuel allotment. So when we're funded at the beginning of the year in transportation, we're only funded, we were only funded at $2.5, $2.51 per gallon. This allocation brings us up to $2.78 per gallon. And if you guys have been to the gas pump lately, you know that that is a long way from where what we pay. Just to call your attention to it, we're, overall, if you do an average, we're funded about 80% of the fuel that we expend on an annual basis. And so that means that we're having to take care of that locally. And I would just encourage you to, I'd like for, to be heard that 80% is not acceptable. We need 100% funding to run our fuel bus, our school buses.
Ms. Klutz, before you move on, on the special allocation for the state, the technology there, how often do we get that? And do we have a specified amount?
For the special, the special children's needs, exceptional children's needs?
No, for the 162,000 computer equipment.
As we register those schools, those funds come down. But it's for all of the elementary schools. I'm looking for Jason. I'm sorry.
It's a special.
Yeah, it's a special project from the state. And as we register each elementary school, then they'll send those funds down. But it's a one-time thing. Okay. All right. So I'll take you on to our local budget amendment. And we're asking to use the funds that we had remaining from installing a fence at Harris Road. The project's complete. And we're just asking to move that money to sod for a baseball field at Harris Road Middle. And so the reason that this is here is because when you approve the projects like we just reviewed in your budget, you approve at a project level. And so we ask that anytime we do anything different, if there's additional funds left over, then that comes back to you and you approve that. Okay? So the next one is our state. And that's just simply a reclass of title funds from one function to another. We're paying the same person, we just needed to change the account code. Nothing significant there.
Ms. Klutz?
Uh huh.
I just had an epiphany. In this example that you're showing us, the code number, they're very close in their category or classification. So that basically means that it's an equivalent.
It is.
Transfer of these funds.
It's exactly.
The closeness or the proximity of the numbers translate to that the two expenses are close.
Similar.
Are very similar in some way or another.
They are, they're very similar. And it's really just a technicality in how DPI wanted to see this person classed, and it's how we originally classed them. And essentially, we're paying, we're absolutely paying the same person, we're just getting it to the right function, which is very similar to what you just described.
Right. Thanks for the translation.
Okay. And so the final budget amendment is our capital outlay. And you've seen this before. What happens is that when the state presents replacement buses for us, sometimes they lease them. And when they do that, they send the payment down and we have to record the budget. And it's just a general ledger transaction. But they're taking care of all of that for us.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Klutz. Board members, do you have any questions, concerns on this? We'll start on Mr. Phillips' side. If you have none, we'll move.
None.
Okay. Mr. Harrison, further questions?
When we say buses, we mean buses. But on the, your previous presentation, when we say vehicles, we're not talking about buses.
Correct. You're very correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter.
And these are the yellow buses, not the activity buses?
You're right. These are yellow buses. The state only provides the yellow buses. It's the county and local responsibility to provide the activity buses. So if we have a fleet of 300 yellow buses, that we're on a replacement cycle, and the state brings those in whenever they're at a point, 200,000, I think. And I think our transportation director's sitting back there, if we need clarification. But they're on a cycle, or he was. He's gone now. So the state replaces them and we get new to replace those. But activity buses are our responsibility. We have to, we have to get county funding, capital outlay to replace those.
Okay, Mr. Walter, you got your question answered. Okay, Mr. Kiger, Ms. Carpenter.
Quick question.
Key up, please.
The 162,000.
Now, is that to buy actually iPads for teachers, right?
It is.
How many is this going to buy for us?
Now, that's not the entire allocation. That would just be a portion of our schools that came down at that time. But the, oh, okay. Kelly's gonna address.
We've already placed the order and received them. It purchased 423 iPads that went to the teachers, directly to the teachers. And this was a project from the state.
Okay. So is that added into, I know somewhere along the line, we saw 16,000 devices. Did that have those 16, was that added?
No, ma'am, it did not.
So we've got that, so that those 400 is added into, that's, this 400 would be added into that 16,000 we have?
That is correct.
Okay.
They, teachers received them last week.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker.
Well, in that same vein, you said you had to register the schools and that's when you got the money. So what is the registration period? How long does it take to register a school so that you can get the money? I mean, it's been trickling in all year, so it seems like there must be a lengthy process in this registration.
Jason.
This was just a one-time allocation for a specific legislative action, the reading 3D that came out. So it was just go in, register your schools, and then they allocated the money to us and we purchased the thing, and it's all done.
So how many schools are left?
All of them are, they're all taken care of.
So we're finished?
We're done, yeah.
Okay.
And it's just grades K through 3.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so in four more years, we will have to get with the local folks, our local commissioners, to replace these units, basically on a replacement schedule. So it'll be added to the existing.
Mm-hmm.
And if we do the other purchase of how many hundreds or thousands of units, then that will, so we've got a big bubble coming up here in four years that we need to prepare our commissioners for, for equipment replacement.
Absolutely. It'd be great to be able to have a renewal cycle to keep what we have current. But absolutely, your point is well-taken. We do, we will have the same problem in four years, but we're not, we're not taking care of what we have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Dr. Shepherd, you have some comments?
I just want to add that I think the state deserves attention and notice in this, that we've forever have done K-2 assessment with pencil and paper and bringing them to desktop computers. And we've been hearing for quite some time about their reading 3D program and how it's going to help us prepare children to be on grade level by the end of grade 3, and that they would provide a device for each teacher in order to record how well the student is reading. And I always wonder what that device would be. And the device is, is the iPad that the teachers will use as they're walking around and listening to students read and recording on that. So in this difficult time when we've had very few funds for materials and supplies and technology endpoints, as we call them, I just, I think the state deserves, you know, a pat on the back for providing a device for our teachers and helping us equip them to be in the 21st century. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Board members, are you okay, everybody okay for the consent agenda on the 11th? Everybody okay with the consent? Okay, good show. Thank you, Ms. Klutz, on that. And let's see where we're at. I think you've got something else coming up. Yes, you do.
I do.
You've got the audit contract, 5.2, board members, if you're there. Ms. Klutz is there, so we're ready to hear this.
Okay. We, by law, our general statute, we're required to have an audit every year. We are recommending that we use the same firm that we've used these last year. There's no increase in fee. And we're, we had the same auditors for a significant amount of time. The board asked us to bid that out, and we did. And so this, we're only a couple of years into this audit firm, and we feel like we should continue with the same firm and get our responsibilities taken care of as far as an audit goes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Klutz. Board members, how we stand on this? You have questions? Everybody clear? Mr. Phillips?
I think they said in there what their, you know, what their quote was. I'm just wondering how does that compare to the previous year when they won the contract? I assume they were a low bidder then?
There, it's exactly the same. So I made sure of that.
Okay, board members, are there any other questions? Mr. Harrison?
As I remember, there was an audit last year. What is the audit cycle? Just some background again on either the requirements or the preference for frequent audits is basically my question.
And Mark looks like he wants to, you, feel free to.
Or the legal requirement, apparently.
Do you want to? Okay.
Go ahead, Kelly, if you want. It's an annual audit is what the statute calls for, and it kind of runs April to October. Is the timing? In other words, I think they would start, you know, now and do it. But Kelly knows, Kelly's the one who works with the auditor, so I'll let her give you more specific. I just know what the statute speaks to.
And I guess I'm also asking, in that case, if the scope or the nature of the audit in one year is the same as the scope or the nature of an audit in the next year, so that from year to year, we can see, in effect, even if there are different auditing firms, that similar results or comparisons? I mean, can we go back from previous years to a set of audits, results, and see kind of cumulative data?
So they're auditing a lot of the same information on a year-to-year basis. You have the interim audit, and so they'll come in prior to the year closing, and they'll do some sampling and some testing. They also do compliance, things like, things that I'll just note is, they'll go out and they'll check, they do all the financials, and they'll do the IEPs for the EC students and things like that. But they'll also go out and they'll make sure that a vending machine is not turned on during the period of time in which child nutrition is. Those are compliance issues that we have to monitor and we'll make sure that we're adhering to. They're also, last year, and this is to answer your question about is it the same or does it change, there's a standard set of things that they're going to do, because they're going to, they want to attest to the financial statements and their accuracy. But they're also going to go out and do things that are, that's new. So we had the concussion awareness last year was fairly new. And so they went out and they tested all of our documents and records on concussion awareness to make sure that we were following proper procedures. So the answer to your question is yes and no. They do a lot of the same things, but they'll also do new things too. And they get direction from DPI. And also, they'll check our federal programs, and they get direction from the federal government on what they should check. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Schumaker, you have a question?
So these guys, so this firm will do more than just a financial audit. They're a general auditing firm, so they'll audit your policies, processes, to make sure, doesn't matter what they are, they'll just go out there and see if you're doing what you say you're doing and follow through with that.
That's compliance. Mm-hmm. They will audit, they audit a significant amount of compliance and make sure that we have internal controls in place and procedures to make sure to prevent fraud and those kinds of things. So they do all of that for us. And they, the interim in April, May, they'll come and they'll spend about a week here on site. In August, or whenever they schedule the final, they're going to spend probably another week on site. And there's usually at least three of them here.
And I'm sorry to be chatty Cathy here, I guess, but what, to what extent do we establish the scope of any of these audits? Or do we limit an audit to what the state directs us to audit? Can this board ask for particular audit details or particular, a focus on a particular program or activity or compliance? I guess what I'm saying is, how much do we control the scope of the ultimate audit year to year?
This is the standard audit. So they're going to follow DPI guidance and structure and feds. But if you wanted to do something different in addition, then you would need to determine a scope of work and contract that out. And there would be a fee associated with that, but that would not be included in this. But you certainly could.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Well, you know, I can, if my memory serves me correctly, Ms. Klutz, toot your horn a little bit, you know, I think that we've had three, four, five years with zero derogatories, zero findings, not only with the former firm, but with this current form, firm that we're using now. So that says a lot in itself about what we're doing in Cabarrus County schools. Because, you know, when DPI and other organizations tell us what they want us to check, and then an independent third-party person comes in and checks it and verifies it and says, we're in compliance, then guess what? We're in compliance. So with that being said, is everybody okay with the consent agenda for the 11th on the audit for next year? Okay, you have it for consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Okay, our next item here will be the early college calendar. Dr. Sane? I mean, I think I'm right. No, 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 I'm sorry. It's Ms. Probst on the annual computer lease here. Of course, I just remember her telling me it was going to be so quick, we didn't know she was there. So anyway.
Thank you for approving it. I'll sit down.
Okay, well, you're here.
Good evening. For the last 12 years, the county has provided funding for an annual lease for renewing of computers. This year, for the first time, or maybe five years ago we did, but for the last four years, we've had Dell leases, and we're now moving to an Apple lease. On January 30th, our technology committee met, and two of our board members were there, and we approved the moving of the lease to support three schools, Odell, Boger, and Burr. And just a few changes that we're having is we're moving teachers from desktops to laptops. We are buying many more laptops and carts for movable labs. Couple other pieces, because we will be in the, in the process of purchasing very quickly, we were able to negotiate a 15% cut off of current pricing, which allows us to buy more machines. So that's all really exciting. And the biggest thing is, I'm presenting this to you tonight without having the lease in front of you. Mark can tell you that for the last week daily, our lawyers are talking to their lawyers, and we're going back and forth. And we're really hoping to have final leases in draft, I mean, to send to Mark for approval tomorrow. And as soon as I get Mark's approval on those, I will send those to you. But the reason I bring this to you tonight is because I really need you to put this on the action agenda for, to next Monday night. And the reason is, if I can get the order in on Tuesday, I think we can set these schools up over Easter. Apple has guaranteed delivery prior.
And that would be a very good goal.
Prior to spring break.
That would be a very good goal. So, board members, do we have any questions? We'll start on Mr. Schumaker's side, if you have any questions.
So what we expect that we'll see by next Monday is a lease and the number of units that you're proposing that we invest in.
You will, you will see the actual leases and the, and number of units and pricing and lease rate and all of that. And I am really hoping that you will see that by tomorrow.
And Mark, what does that look like?
I'm looking forward to looking at it. Now, I think.
Wait a second, Mark.
We've, I think, I think we'll be okay with it. And I've seen some of the general lease language. I just want to look at the actual lease documents. Under our policy, I'm supposed to review and approve the actual leases. So we've been going back. I don't think there'll be problems with the legal language, but we haven't done Apple leasing before. And so I just want to make sure that we're, have dotted the i's and crossed the t's, but.
What's going to happen to the other machine? Oh, I'm sorry.
And I guess at the end of the lease, there's a buyout option if you want to exercise it or give back?
No, we, our leases, we keep them at the end of the lease. And I will tell you, for the last 12 years, we've had a $1 million rolling lease. That's about 900 machines, and that's it. And so if we didn't keep the machines that we have and wear them out until they're seven or eight years old, you would not have nearly the amount of technology you have in the schools. So what we do is, we hold on to them, we label them. When we get them to a certain point, they're obviously past warranty, but let's say they're six, seven, or eight years old, we tag them and we let the end user know, if this breaks, it has to go to surplus. It's not worth us repairing it anymore. And it's a very complex situation, but I don't know how else to keep the number of machines in the school with a lease that, rolling lease that only provides about 900 machines a year.
And so what's the, what are we expecting the standard for this lease will be? Will it be a four, five-year lease?
The standard is a rolling three-year lease. We want, own them at the end of the third year.
Right. I think you lease for three, and then it's like a nominal $1 payment at the end of the third year, and then you own it, is at the draft that I saw.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Did she answer her question, Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, and you're saying, then we wouldn't have anything on the other, other.
You're saying we wouldn't have anything on the other equipment that we have, then?
I don't, I don't understand the question.
Well, the other, are all our equipment going to be Apples, then?
Our elementary schools are primarily Mac. The only PCs in the schools are with the administrators in the front office, specifically the treasures and the data managers. But most of the elementary schools, except for four at this point, are all elementary. I believe on February 2nd, I presented to you the idea that we would eventually be moving all of the elementaries to Mac.
Okay.
We still are PC at the middle and high school.
And we've got contracts on those, though? Or do we not have anything on those?
Are we talking about former leases? Or are we talking about, when you say contracts?
I mean, I mean, do we have, I mean, are they under leases, the others?
We're paying on former leases. For example, two years ago, we updated Northwest Cabarrus High School, we updated Central Cabarrus High School, and we updated Concord High School. So they're in the second payment of their third lease.
Okay. But they are.
Of the three-year lease.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger.
I'll wait until I actually have the, it's hard to ask questions about a lease that I hadn't read yet, but.
Oh, it makes it fun.
Well, I tend to agree with you. And that's why I say, when we get the document, hopefully the next day or two, then I'm sure there'll probably be more questions. And that's why you recommend action item for next week. But we'll continue on with the rest of the board. Mr. Walters, do you have any question?
Now, again, the rush is to do what?
If we place this order by next Tuesday, we've worked with Apple that they can guarantee a two-week delivery, and we would like to refurbish the schools over spring break. It just makes sense, when the children and the staff are out of the buildings, that our workers would come in and, our staff would come in and update.
Those are the three schools or the four?
Those are the three elementary schools.
Okay. And right now, they have Dells?
Right now, they have Macs.
Macs, okay. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison.
So this is a good thing.
It is a very good thing.
Yes.
I'm very encouraged with the pricing. I'm very encouraged that we are moving forward and working with our teachers, that their teacher machine in their room can actually be a laptop, and they'll be able to take it home and then also bring it back and use it during the school day. Very encouraged with that. Encouraged that the principals are supportive of moving in a direction of movable labs. I think that'll help us a lot.
Again, thanks to the entire technology committee and all of your really stellar efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Phillips? Okay, everybody okay then for the action agenda? No problem. So I know nobody's ready to vote on something they haven't seen. So we got that down, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Probst. All right, we'll move on to the early college calendar with Dr. Sane. And if it would please the board, what I'd like to do, Dr. Sane, since you have this one and then the last one, why don't we just go ahead and do yours right back to back? And then we'll bring Donna up. We go ahead and do both of yours if you can. I was going to give you that notice so you could get your material, and we could just do them both at the same time. And that'll save you a few steps at the end of your long day. So we'll be doing the early college calendar, and then we'll do the policy revisions on second reading.
All right. Thank you so very much. The early college calendar sets a different calendar. Early college, early college high school sets a different calendar from our traditional Cabarrus County Schools calendar in that they are aligned with Rowan Cabarrus. And so Rowan Cabarrus Community College sets their calendar and then each year, and then we mirror our calendar out, excuse me, I can't talk tonight. Maybe I need to walk back and forth a couple of times. But we mirror our calendar to match theirs, so that when the campus is open and students are there, our students are also there. It does meet all the state guidelines for calendars, so we're good to go on that. The only thing that I added that Mr. Fishback had not added is numerous makeup days, just in case. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Sane. Board members, we have any comments, questions, or where you're at? Mr. Phillips?
So you said it complies with the state requirements, but they're starting on the 7th of August, so we must get some kind of a special waiver?
We do. We have a waiver for that, so that we can begin and keep, run our calendar the same timeframe as Community College. You'll notice they also close early. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Harrison.
And how many of our students does this affect? How many, give or take, are in the early college?
This should affect about 240-some students next year.
That's a pretty good, close, accurate number, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Is everybody okay for the consent agenda for the 11th? Not, hey, is everybody okay? Okay, Dr. Sane, that'd be on the consent agenda for the 11th. Now, we'll go ahead and do the policy revisions. And remember, board, these are the ones that we talked about previously. So this is policy revisions on the second reading.
I'd like to draw your attention to some editing changes on policy 1320. Are you dropping? 13, 1310, excuse me, 1310. If you'll look down to, on page one, item number seven and eight, keep going, maybe page two. One more time. There you go. Keep going to that. On seven and eight, we were going to move the policy numbers to the end of those line items that are to be shared with parents in order to be consistent with the other line items. For example, number six, you see the policy number is at the end of the item. Okay? So those will be taken care of by the time you see them next time. If we can move to policy 4151. If you look down on page one of five, down at the bottom, you can see that letter A can see that letter A was eliminated, and we failed to catch that, and changed letter B to A. And on the next page, we failed to change letter C to B. Those changes will be made for you next time. Okay?
While we're on that one, if you look at the numbering, it's, you know, it starts with homicide as one, and ends up with number 10. Number 10 needs to be a nine.
Okay.
So, I just noticed that.
Thank you. And I do want to thank Mr. Barry Shoemaker for giving me a call this afternoon and say, are you sure this is right? And helping us out on that. And policy 6260? 6220. I can't read tonight. Apparently, it's past my bedtime. I'm sorry. Thank you. Alright. Under number seven, you'll see there's something that looks out of line there. That was an explanation as to why number seven could be eliminated, so that will be blacklined for you last time, next time. Okay? We've discussed all of these policies in detail. Are there any other policies that you would like to discuss today, or any of these policies that you found something I didn't find?
Okay, board members, where are we at? Mr. Shoemaker, you on the policy council? Are you okay?
I actually am not, but I'm fine.
Okay, well, good. When you're part of the board, you're part of the policy council, too. Do you know that? Oh, goodness, you are part of all of it. Okay, Ms. Carpenter, you have any questions? Okay, Mr. Kiger. Okay, anybody on this end have any comments? Mr. Harrison?
Yeah, I think I'm the one who should be paying close attention to the policies in general. Is, help me understand, please, the need for this many policies to come to us at one time?
This is leftovers from changes that were made during the summer by the Summer Legislature. And what happens is the State School Board Association takes all of that legislature and compares it to the policies that we have. And they send us updates on those policies. And in order not to overwhelm anybody at one time, I actually try to keep it to a manageable number. I think last summer before last, there were some 50-some policies that were affected by law changes during the summer. So, this year, we're just, we're trying to bring you just 10 or 15 at a time.
Or fewer, if possible.
Or fewer, right. And, and I've done that before.
But because of the complexity and the, and the legal nature of these matters, I think the whole board could benefit from having a half dozen at a time, but.
Got it.
If they could be prioritized. But I know it's a matter of what comes down from the state as well. But thank you again for your work.
You're welcome. And lots of times, I try to choose the easy ones and group them together, like there's a citation change that needs to be done, and that's really all we have to do, then I'll lump those together. And the more specific ones, like the ones we're going to talk about in April, are the more meaty changes that we have to talk about. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sane. Thank you, board members. Is everybody okay for the consent agenda for the 11th? Everybody's good? Okay, Dr. Sane, you're good for, to go on the 11th. Alright, we have one final report here, and this is Donna Smith with the athletics. And then again, this will be one of our consent or action items, whichever. So, Donna, when you get ready.
Before I present, I'd like to take a special moment to tell you, this is the last time Gary Calamery and I get to stand together to make an athletic proposal. And let me explain why. Not many people retire on Thursday, February 28th, and are willing to come back to a board meeting the following Monday. But that's pretty good, isn't it? And I'd just like to thank Gary for his leadership during the time he's been with us, because we feel like we've come a long way with athletics, in addition where we were. But we salute Gary.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I've been at Cabarrus County Schools the last 23 years. Started out Northwest Middle for four years, went to Mount Pleasant High School as the high school athletic director. Was fortunate to come over here for at least a year and a half. Because of my health, I just felt that, and we needed to get somebody in here that could deal with the everyday business that I could not because of my, my, my blood cancer. But I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
With that in mind, I'm speaking for Gary and me now. First, we'd like to thank the use of QSCB funds to help improve several of our athletic facilities. It's doing a lot, as you know, with Northwest Cabarrus High School, and it's going to be doing a lot with Concord High School soon. And with that in mind, we recognize that each high school has facility needs. And the only way they've been able to address these is the revenue that we're able to secure through gate receipts, as well as booster club activities. And yet, even with this, we continue to have equity issues with our athletic facilities. And so, the proposal tonight we'd look at is to assist with improvements with our athletic facilities. The proposal is to allocate $80,000 to our other five traditional high schools to use in improving athletic facilities. And the proposal was simply this, we'd like for each school to submit by March the 29th, their plan of how they can use this $80,000. For example, parents and students at Robinson have raised additional funds to help with their fieldhouse building. And this could be an option that they choose to say they'd like to apply that, to that amount. And so, with that in mind, what we'd like to also propose is that the plans that the schools submit be reviewed by an ad hoc team in the county, which would be comprised of the finance representation, facilities representation, and also student services, to see the feasibility of each plan. Because you can propose a lot of things, but we also have to look at the timeframe, et cetera, for a lot of things. So, our idea would be to come back to you in the April meeting, and I don't know if Gary will come back from retirement in April or not, but at that time, to present to you the proposal of how each school plans to use those $80,000 along with a timeframe as such. To prepare for this proposal, I did go ahead and have a conversation with each high school principal, as well as the athletic director and staff, too, to say, okay, if this opportunity would come your way, tell me a little bit about how you'd receive that. And I don't think in all the time that I've had to work with athletics, I've ever had such an enthusiastic response. The phone dropped first and said, you're asking me what? And as I repeated the message again, it was simply something they were totally unprepared for, but very quickly went into action, saying, we don't want to tell you too much now, but we're already beginning planning. So, I begin hearing Plan A, Plan B. But in summation, what we'd like to do, that would be $80,000 for five of the high schools. And the reason being, we would not include Concord High and Northwest Cabarrus High is because they have been included in some pretty substantial QSCB projects. But by not including them, I don't want to infer that their athletic facilities are just wonderful all the way around, if I can leave it that way. So, that's our proposal.
Okay, Ms. Smith, thank you for bringing that to us. And we want to, obviously, the board will want to question this a little bit. And we'll start on Mr. Phillips' side, if you've got your questions or concerns.
Well, first of all, I want this to be on the action agenda. I, I don't like the approach. We are leapfrogging beyond countless capital projects that are already on the priority list, and it, I'm just not going to support it. And even if that was not the case, I, the, the way to address inequities amongst the high schools is not to give each high school $80,000. My kids go to Cox Mill High School. My son is on the golf team. He's an athlete at Cox Mill. You cannot tell me that Cox Mill has the same amount of needs for facilities at schools that are 40 and 50 years old. It just isn't the case. And so, don't come to me and say that Cox Mill needs just as much money as Central. It doesn't. I want to see a prioritized list, and I'm not going to vote for this.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison?
Mr. Phillips' analysis stands to reason, but I would like to see more detail and, and more prioritization.
Okay. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I guess I, too, would like to see a prioritization. But we haven't, haven't talked about security issues. And I think security issues are a little bit higher on a priority list, from, from my perspective. You know, I was over at Royal Oaks yesterday, and a camera system was brought to my attention. Would be helpful for security. We were talking about several other things that had come up with the folks that spoke, spoke earlier today, about the things that would be, that security would be more in a higher priority than the, than that, from my perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Kiger?
Well, I'm going to differ from the previous three. I'm, I'm fine with the, with the proposal. I think it's apropos that on the same night that we introduce and, and talk about strings and arts, that we also talk about athletics, because we have multiple things and multiple pieces of the puzzle that we are responsible for, and athletics is part of it. Even, I'll give you an example. I know at Hickory Ridge, it is a new school, and it doesn't have as many needs, if you make a big list. But there's some grading and drainage issues that were done incorrectly from the get-go. Was it anybody's specific fault? Well, maybe not. Maybe, maybe it's the contractor or whatever. But it's things that come up over time, is, is, is these athletic departments have to operate. And so, I think having the, the ability to reach out, to let them figure out the projects that they want to do, to send back to us, to them, for us to look at them, you know, that, that's, that's what they're asking, I mean, that's what we're asking them to do. And I think that's an appropriate measure to take, so we can kind of look at what they have in mind, where it's closer to where the rubber meets the road, for where the need is, instead of us telling them what they need to do. They can tell us what they need. And then, you know, we've, we've set up an expectation level of, here's a dollar amount you have to work with. We've got limited funds to be able to do things. We're trying to cover a lot of bases, and this is one of them. And I think this is an appropriate thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I have to agree with my gentleman down at the other end, because, again, I have different perspective on, if I had $400,000, where I would want to spend that $400,000. As many of you know, I had asked, the planetarium has been a concern that I have, have been looking into for years over at Central. And that could serve many, many children, and could be something that could really enhance the program over at Central. That would cost roughly $348,000 to see that become a reality. And that could help the STEM program tremendously. And then, I had talked to the Sheriff's Department to find out what we could get, a security officer, what's the least amount we could get, a security officer possibly for Royal Oaks. And he said, well, basically, if we could get the county to work with us on maybe using one of the older cars, you know, maybe replaced, that we could maybe look at about $55,000. Well, if you take that 55 and add the 348, that's right at the $400,000. So, I could look at maybe doing something like that. Again, you mentioned the cameras. Security, to me, is something we really need to be looking closely at. And I would want to look at that $400,000 maybe differently before I would jump to do this. You know, the, the programs, you know, the programs for education, we, you know, we can't get money on that. Athletics can actually get money for themselves. In other words, they can, you know, your ballgame is revenue-supporting. You know, our education programs aren't. So, we have to support those by, you know, doing other things. Someone had even mentioned, if we got the planetarium up and running, it could actually maybe be a revenue in, producing thing, if we could get other school systems to come in. That possibly could start producing some revenue on its own, if we could get it up and running again. That was a real asset to our community when it was first opened up years and years ago. So, that's something. And I know that the school itself has already raised $1,500 to go to that, which is currently in their budget. So, that is something that I hope that we will possibly consider.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Shoemaker, your comments, please?
Well, I'll explain this along the bar.
Thought I hit it. Sorry. I did hit it. But I'm more concerned right now about several of our older buildings and older schools that are, that do have security issues. And we've, we need to allocate those dollars in a favorable way. I haven't, I've missed out of several of the budget meetings, so hopefully this week, I'll get back in, in the swing when we have the one at the end of the week. But I really want to look at some of, some of our facility needs to see where, where we are on those. Because, you know, when you, when you hear the problems at Wolf Meta, and you hear the problems at Royal Oaks, and we, and there is, you know, those schools were constructed in a time when we wanted to have open environments for our children. I'm a coach, and, and I'm, my heart is for athletics. But at the same time, when I see glaring needs in some of our infrastructure, and, and we need to take care of that, I'm really more focused on the infrastructure needs and, and the athletes, even though I, I see the need for the schools, and, and I think that's a real big opportunity to build these fields up, so that we can use them for, not only for the schools themselves, but for their extra activities. I don't think we've created a plan right now that's, that's constructed well enough that we can utilize these fields, not only for our school activities, but for the public activities. And we need to work closer with some of the other agencies that, that have, that we've talked about in some past meetings, the Cabarrus Visitors Bureau and all, who want to bring in tournaments, and how that might work with us to help us maybe address some of our athletic needs by getting some, you know, revenue off of that. So, I think there's some other approaches we need to take in the future. But really, $400,000 is a lot of money that could go to making sure that we, we, we've taken the, the smart approach to taking care of the safety of our children, especially in the elementary schools that are probably the most disadvantaged, as far as their, the way their infrastructure is constructed, so.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Just my opinion on this, when it was first brought to my attention, whenever we talked about this, you know, I thought, man, this is a great idea. And it is a great idea. It's a kind gesture, you know, of the school system to offer, to give $80,000 to the high schools. I think that's a wonderful thing. But, you know, we just had a public hearing tonight on our budget for 2013 and 14, and we had a couple of PTO representatives here, talking about their schools, the lack of what, the lack of things that other schools enjoy, they don't have. And I, I just find it, after hearing, hearing those reports, and then thinking about, you know, all of the teachers throughout our system that go to the store and buy things on their own, because they don't have the funding to get the things that they need for the classroom, and then we're talking about putting this kind of money over into the athletics to hopefully make them more equitable. It's, it's a very good thing to do that, if we had plenty of money, which is not the case. It's never the case that we have plenty of money. So, I, I, I think that it just needs to go for a vote, the action agenda. And the way it stands right now, I just, with all these other needs and things, Ms. Smith, I, I really couldn't support it at this time. I couldn't. And obviously, we've got some other members that feel the same way. But I wish that there was a way, though, that we could appropriate the money to help the teachers out in some way, so they don't have to take their own money to buy things for the kids. And some of the, the smaller projects, maybe at Colton Webb, and also at Wolf Meta, and maybe even at Royal Oaks Elementary, somehow, ante up this $400,000 to put, you know, things better for more people, than just for the high school athletics. And that's just my two cents worth. So, based on what I've heard this evening, you know, this will be on the action agenda for the 11th. And, and hopefully, you may have some information between now and then that you want to get to us for reconsideration or whatever, or even more discussion when we do the action agenda. Okay?
So, I'm hearing you do want us to continue working with the high schools?
Well.
Even though I know we have a variety of, you know, perceptions presented tonight. I guess I'm interested in knowing that you are seeking information.
Maybe you could bring some different ideas to us, you know, different ideas, in addition to the high schools. You know, you guys can talk about this. And maybe if the board would like to make some recommendations other than the high schools, if they'd like to take an opportunity to do that now, we can, to give you something, sort of, some guidance on what to be working on between now and next week.
Right. I want it well-directed, in terms of where we're going for.
I mean, that's a whole different budget discussion. If, you know, if we, I guess we get, if we're going to give Donna some direction, it's about the proposal that she's bringing us here. If we want to do something else, or have her look into other things or whatever, that, that's a whole different, that's a whole different discussion.
Well, I'm afraid, though, that if we vote, if, if we took a vote on it tonight, it would fail.
Right. But we have another week to talk about.
What we're going to talk about? If, if you got, if you got a, you know, a consensus now, that it's not going to pass, and it's the way it is.
Well, first off, we don't have a consensus, because I would vote for it. So, that's not a consensus. However, I, I guess what I'm asking is, if we want to ask Donna to gather any other information from the high schools, to bring to us that she thinks is relevant, that's fine. But to ask her to go look after security and grounds and maintenance and all that other things, that's not what she's talking about. That's a different discussion.
Well, it doesn't really matter to me, because I just carry one vote anyway. And I spoke my opinion, just like everybody else did, you know, and that's the way it is. So, we'll just leave it just like it is. It goes to the action agenda, and we'll make the decision at that point. And if you want to gather the information, knowing pretty much how these three gentlemen, and myself, and Ms. Carpenter, and Mr. Shoemaker feel, then, you know, so if you want to get the information, knowing where we're at, that's certainly alright with.
I mean, I'd be interested to see the list, at least seeing what the priorities are at the school. What would they, what they'd want to do with the money? I mean, I don't.
Okay. That helps guide where the direction.
For future, for us, for our purposes, I mean, we, at least I personally support athletics. I just think at this point, we need to be looking at the security of our schools prior to, before we, we tackle that. But I would be interested to see what the priority, priorities are at the schools.
Okay.
Okay. So, that's how we'll do it then, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. So, that'll be on the action agenda for next week. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I believe that concludes the meeting tonight, and no other topics on the agenda. So, may I have a motion that this meeting be adjourned?
Agreed.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and good night to everyone. We'll see you back on the 11th.